Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I did introduce myself. I'm Ward Three Alderman Gary Miller. I'll be directing the meeting tonight in the absence of our mayor, who's not here tonight. That being the case, let's open the meeting of the Warranted Board of Aldermen for May 15, 2018. If you will stand and we'll have a pledge, please.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three, the consent agenda.
We have the regular and executive meeting minutes from May 1, 2018, and the regular and executive meeting minutes from May 8, 2018.
We'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items. So, a second. Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Costello. Roll call.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
The next item is number four, the introduction of Aaron Sutton. A police officer.
I'd like to introduce Aaron Sutton, our newest hire.
Welcome. Have him onboard.
Nice to meet you.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
You guys seem to know each other, huh?
Yeah, I've worked with Mr. Sutton for several years. He's a good officer. Glad he's with us.
Okay, next item, item five, hearing from the public. We will give you five minutes to come to the podium and let us know what's on your mind. If anyone from the public wants to come forward, do so.
Alan Weber, my daughter Jennifer Weber. She lives at 420 East Timber at Oak Acres. The park is going next to her and everything.
That's right behind my house.
And when they were cutting down trees and everything, we asked the people that are cutting trees down that there's three big old trees that are about 60 foot tall that are dead. We see about getting them cut down while they were doing it. They said they had to have a work order from the city. She contacted the city and everything.
Couple times.
And to get them cut, and nothing's happened.
It was about a year ago that I contacted the city and they told me, okay, we'll put a work order in, but we have to see if it's even on our property. And I said, okay, that's fine, but I can tell you, it's, the park is literally going right behind my house, so I know it is. And they said, okay, well, I don't know when somebody will be out, but, you know, put an order in for somebody to come see if it is, in fact, our property, and I'll let you know. Well, a year later, they're still there, and I still have never heard anything or can get an answer.
And I put a fence in, an above-ground pool, and if they come down, it's gonna take those out.
Or in my house.
In the deck and maybe part of our house, and I do enough work for her. I don't have to do it again.
Terry, do you recall this, or are you familiar?
I've not been involved in this at all. It's the first time I've heard about it.
Like I said, it's been a year since I contacted them. I was hoping with more development with the park, that they would have gotten, you know, to the trees, and they are, it seems like, getting closer and closer to my part of the house, and they've even cleared trees behind my neighbor's house. But I luckily still get to keep the woods behind my house, but in those woods are these massive dead trees.
Guy, are you familiar with this?
No, sir, I'm not. I actually tried to go to the park board meeting last night, but where they have the meeting at, because I stopped up here and tried every door, and they even asked Officer Kavanaugh where they had the meeting, and he had no idea where they had the meeting at, so.
Yeah, we had a special meeting at the Minkley Park to dedicate the planting of a tree for one of our aldermen that passed away.
I mean, the sign out there doesn't ever say where the meetings are at.
So, whose jurisdiction does this fall? This grounds and maintenance, or is it?
The BBR, yes.
Public Works, or so?
Yeah, I'll take a look. I thought those trees were well on, they were not on city ground, they were on Gerald's ground.
It's past my fence, and you guys approved permit.
Yeah, but I don't think that fence is on the, is on the line, because the stakes were, I think I remember.
I remember the stakes when I put the fence up.
I mean, you guys approved the permit, and you approved the fence.
We'll look at it again, because when the clears were out there is when they said it was not on their, was not on, those trees were not on our, our ground.
There's three of them.
We'll have somebody.
We'll check it out. I'll check it out first thing in the morning.
And can we actually get an answer, though? Because that's the problem, is a year ago, somebody was supposed to go take a look and tell me, you know, something, and I never got that communication.
Somebody will get back with you. If you'll make sure that you get us your phone number before you leave, and then somebody will be back in touch.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll definitely be back with you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the Board of Aldermen comment. Anybody got anything for the?
Mr. President, I'd like just to report that I was not able to attend the monthly Chamber of Commerce meeting. This month had a conflict with the Quills of Allard Mission. I did get a chance to talk to the director and Polarnik, and they are still making steady progress in trying to get the license bureau operational in a warm and friendly manner. Still has challenges, but they're working hard to make that happen.
I'm sure they'll get it done.
Yeah.
Anybody else? I will mention that I was able to meet with Bob Trukin and their board of the Downtown Association a couple of weeks ago. There were plans to meet last night, but that got moved until next Monday, so that'll be on my schedule to meet with you guys, if that's, that's okay. They're gonna meet with our, for full association membership, finalize and continue working on the June 23 event coming up.
Later on the agenda. Since, what? I said, which is later on the agenda.
Yes. Since the mayor isn't here, I presume he doesn't have a comment. Item's removed from the consent agenda, and number eight. We'll move on to number nine, which is the multiple street closures for the Warranted Downtown Association, June 23, 2018, from 12 to 7:00 p.m. for a handmade Market Day and Vendor Fair. Bob, do you have some comments?
Good afternoon. Bob? So, I'm Bob Trukin, owner of Deerfields on Main. I'm the president of the Downtown Association. Stacy is my events committee chairwoman person, does an unbelievable job. We have, we have put together a couple events. The first that is coming is June 1. Kind of put this together, not at the last minute, but it's fast approaching. Did they get a copy of that?
Oh, no.
So, the first event we're going to have, just to bring awareness to all the new businesses in downtown, is called the Sip and Stroll. And the sip and stroll is, all the participating businesses downtown will get a bottle of wine that will be provided by Deerfields, and a card that will list all the participating businesses, and a glass. And they will stroll each of the businesses downtown, visit those businesses, which we have a lot of new businesses now, meet the owners, get familiar with that business, and then that's, that card will get stamped. Once they've completed the card, they will then return that back to Deerfields, and they'll be eligible for a wine basket. So, it's a way of getting people familiar with the new businesses that are downtown, and the existing businesses. Because a lot of people don't even know we have certain businesses downtown, so that's the first of our two events we have going. The second is June 23. It's our spring event. They say we had a vision of bringing a, a spring, early summer event downtown, similar to the Fall Festival, maybe on a smaller scale, but to bring traffic downtown, so people would be aware of what is downtown. We wanted to, we want it to be similar to the old Fruitland Fest that was many, many, many years ago. I'm still learning about what that's all about, but the old timers, none of you are old timers, I guess, but, remember all about the Fruitland Fest and what that was and all that kind of stuff, so we're trying to kind of bring that back up as similar to that. So, we, what we envision is, we're asking to block off a section of downtown, and we will rent each parking spot, and we'll have artisans, vendors, basically whoever wants to rent a spot to sell their wares or services, whatever, and come downtown and be able to bring this to life. Just, one of the things, and we want to learn from this event to make it better next year, to possibly have, I will have, I will have a live band that will be playing outside my winery. I also have a vendor, several weeks ago, I had a new food supplier that came in, Green Meadow Goat Dairy, gonna supply all my goat cheese now, while he also, he has baby goats, while he is going to participate in my, in our downtown spring event, and he's gonna, it's basically gonna be like a petting zoo. So, he will bring in baby goats, and it's just some of the things we're trying to bring families downtown to be able to come and visit and participate in our event, so. Questions?
Anything to add?
I think I spelled it all out in there. We're not looking at a big drinking thing, we're looking at a family thing, getting crafters in, things that kids can come and make, events, we're doing like little cornucopia-style things with flowers for kids to make. The Fine Arts Council, I've talked to Flavia, they're gonna donate some stuff and have a little section for kids to do fun things, make some things. I think we've thought of everything. We've thought trash cans, we've thought of.
Porta-potties.
Porta-potties. We've got all that covered, so I think, and insurance, I think I've got it all on there. But if I've missed something, let me know, and I can address it for you guys.
Looks like you guys are gonna have a 5K run. Is that a possibility, or?
We're trying.
We're trying.
Our person who was gonna help out with that was Teresa Scott, so we haven't found anyone to fill her shoes yet.
Are you getting good reaction to the?
Yes, got people coming to us asking, but we didn't wanna do much without approval, so.
We really haven't fully publicized this yet. We wanted to wait until after this meeting, and then.
We've got banners ready to go, we've got signage ready to go, just waiting for the guests, so I can make a phone call in the morning.
I had a potential vendor this morning ask about who to contact.
That's why I gave you guys packets, so if you know of anyone.
Participate in, I gave you your name.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we've got a lot of, there's a lot of Pinterest crafters out there these days, got a lot of those people wanting to come. It's sort of like, have you heard of Joanna Gaines from HGTV? Think of it like that, that's how we're marketing it. Just a cute little day to go spend with your family, downtown Warton, and hopefully next year, we'll make it even bigger and better. A lot of these people book up a long time in advance, so this year, of course, it's gonna be smaller, but we're gonna get there.
We'll learn from this year, and be able to make it bigger and better next year.
Any other questions? Bobby, got anything?
Primary street closure of Dryden.
Yes, so I tried to stay away from the post office, tried to stay away from PNC Bank. So, we left Dryden, the whole length of Dryden shut down, so that Bob can utilize that for the band and the baby goats. The kids area is going to be over by Dr. Brent's office, and we're gonna utilize his, his parking lot, so that's why that's blocked off down there.
This will be from the church?
Yeah.
Down to?
Southeast Street.
Southeast Street.
So, those two legs that are, you know, coming up of Main Street are for, we're gonna utilize that for extra space.
So, southeast will be closed to Walton? Is that what you're looking at, that we're looking at?
Yes, yes.
Basically, it's two streets, huh?
And then, dependent on how this year goes, and we may expand that next year.
We counted the parking spots and averaged the size for the vendor space, and what we'd had originally was just way too big, so we scaled it back.
Dryden's good. I think I would be glad to see the Downtown Association get adjusted on some of these things.
We didn't want to brand it the Fruitland Fest yet, because we want to make that a big bang next year.
I remember the Fruitland Fest.
So, any input you guys have, I remember when I was a kid, but it's not a whole lot that I remember, but if anything you guys remember that you would like to share, if we want to see it come back.
I remember that Gina Cornell and Linda Stuti were the two main characters in that one, wasn't I?
I think so, and it was the Fruitland Fest until we changed the lights, then that's when it got changed to the Catch the Glove.
Well, the Fruitland Fest had gone by the wayside, but.
There were numbers, years lived after.
Yeah, I remember going as a kid a couple times, and then never again, but I loved it.
That was a sad event, though.
Yeah, if you go back to Brownie, something like Fruitland Fest, you would need to get an oompa-popa hand, aren't we?
Yeah, let's bring some German flair to it.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? If not, we will accept a motion to approve. Will move.
Second.
Alderman Costello made the motion, and seconded by who?
Bob. And adding your clue for the street closure request.
Yes, street closure for the WD, June 23. Roll call vote.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Thank you. Prove six to zero. Looking forward to it. And we'll see you next time.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to item number 10, is the approval of the original package liquor license for Kruger located at 604 East Booths Lake due to change in managing officer. No changes other than the name, managing officer.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Any questions?
No questions.
Comments? Not entertain a motion to accept.
Order.
I make a motion to accept the package liquor license for Kruger.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Shell Harvey. Roll call vote.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Carry six to zero. Number 11, discussion topic, golf cart ordinance. We have worked on this, and our counselor and chief has also worked on this, and I think we have it down to the point where we might need to officially do a vote on it, unless you all have any questions or comments.
My main thing is whether the chief and city attorney are comfortable with the delineation between the UTV versus the slow vehicle ordinance.
Well, Terry and I spent some time today going through all the statutes related to what a municipality can and can't regulate, and there is a statute that allows the city to regulate wheelchairs on the city streets, golf carts on the city streets, we can regulate but not ban low-speed vehicles, which is what our ordinance is geared towards, ATVs, UTVs, and recreational off-highway vehicles, which are, by definition, the exact same description as a ATV, a UTV. So, this is kind of my thoughts about it. I think our ordinance is really tight and very sharp on the, taking into consideration with, you know, access and sidewalks for purposes of the wheelchairs, and I think, as long as you guys are good with that, I think that's, I think it's well-written, and I think it addresses people blocking streets, but allows them to use them to cross or to access where there's no sidewalk there. And then the low-speed vehicles, our regulation complies with the statute, we're comfortable with it, there's some additional safety requirements and registration requirements with the city. Currently, we ban ATVs and UTVs, but we need to update our definitions a little bit on those, and make it a little bit more clear on the UTVs and ATVs that they're banned, and we do have the authority to ban them. So, that's pretty much where we're, where we are, so the ordinance is not on for approval tonight. There's some phraseology that, when we went through it again, I want to add, there's some whereas clauses that are kind of dictated by the statute, and then what we'd also like to do is bring back a couple of revisions to the ATVs and UTVs, UTVs, just to update some of the recent statutory definitions of them, so the officer on the street has a little bit of guidance as to what he's looking for if he catches somebody riding that is not a low-speed vehicle.
Well, I happen to own a UTV, and I've owned several ATVs, and they're anything but a slow-speed vehicle. So, I think the requirements that you have put in, at least the mock ordinance I saw, requiring return signals and lighting and all that, and being registered with the city, and a lot of things that you had in there, I think go a long way to, to prevent it from just being drive whatever you want on the street, so I think that that's a good thing. So, I think tightening up the ATV, UTV probably makes sense, so that way the chief and his folks know what is able to operate on the streets, and you probably still have some arguments, because we do have UTVs on the street now, by the way. I don't know if they just are assuming because of the state regulation that they can operate within two miles of home, or that they're ignoring the, you know, the fact that they are in the city or what, but I've literally had them drive by.
Yeah, we, we need to clean up the, really the ban on it.
Yeah.
To make it a little bit more clear, and then I think it'll be fair, update it with the statute and the definitions.
And it could, you know, your law enforcement, it's been pretty cloudy, you know, what's allowed, what isn't, probably for them, so this would give them a direction to follow also.
I have two or three comments. One is, is there a requirement on these vehicles for some type of muffler? We had, we had the ATV or whatever, UTV, I don't know what the difference is, running up and down Steinag in all day Sunday afternoon, no helmet on anybody, noazier than all hell, and it was not conducive for a neighborhood.
So, that would not be a low-speed vehicle. Really, a low-speed vehicle is a dressed-up golf cart. That's really what, what makes a golf cart into a low-speed vehicle is that it's dressed up to.
Does this vehicle have a cage on it?
No, it was just a.
So, that's an ATV.
Yeah, ATVs are banned on city streets. If you would've called the police, they're explicitly banned on city streets, you cannot drive them on city streets.
And what about, and I notice this ordinance talks about, the vehicle must have four wheels. What about the, I see a number of people on the, I guess you'd call them mopед, or motorized two-wheeler, a gentleman who goes around town on a bike that's somehow motorized. What's the ruling on that?
We have an ordinance, if you recall, a couple of years ago, a gentleman came, and it was a under 49 cc.
Correct.
Bike that operated, and with the chief of police at the time, Greg Cautershell, we created an ordinance that basically allowed it, but they had to have insurance, a driver's license, and all the other things in order to operate that on city streets.
And those are allowed by state regulation, you'll see those on the service road. 49 cc's, they're looked at as almost like a mopед or a non-motorized vehicle, even though they're.
But we, we require, I think we require them to wear an helmet under city ordinance. City ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
I see them both ways.
But, yeah, so the ATV is not allowed under current ordinance. We're gonna tighten up the UTV, so that's clearly not allowed, there's a little ambiguity in our ordinance, we think we can write it a little bit better, and really, the purpose in researching it behind the low-speed vehicles is, you know, they're 20, 20 to 25 mile an hour vehicles, they're super efficient gas-wise, but they're required to have all these safety equipments on them, and, you know, most of the city streets are 30 mile an hour, 25 to 30 mile an hour streets, there's no reason to have a utility vehicle that goes 80 miles an hour. Most of the interaction with law enforcement with ATVs and UTVs are typically not people just going up to get groceries, they're people hot-dogging around in them, probably like you saw on Saturday.
Hey, anybody else got any comments? Got any input? No? Okay.
So, we can expect an ordinance, an ordinance farm next?
Yeah, I think this one's, we just, I want to add a couple of sentences at the top, so this one will be ready, and then I'm gonna, we'll have the ATV and UTV one ready as well. That should be pretty, pretty simple, it's just changing the definition.
Okay. Thank you for.
I don't know, but you've had some calls about it, what happened to, what happened to that ordinance, or if it's still working. Get it done.
Okay, we'll move on to item 12, Terry Thorne, city administrator, support contract funding policy approved.
If you recall, at our last planning meeting, we talked about the need to put some guidelines in place, because the city is experiencing more and more requests for funding for different entities out there. So, I have drafted for you a. So I have drafted for you a policy for your approval, which basically takes into account many of those things that we discussed at our planning meeting. That would be the things that we would be interested in considering funding for, such as making sure that the entities are designated as the 501(c)(3) for the IRS regulation, making sure that there's a minimum of five years prior operating experience serving city residents. So there's a track record that we can fall back on to look and see what the success is. Financial results documenting financial stability, making sure that we are not using taxpayer dollars for something that is not financially stable, ensuring that operating expenses are being used toward program services primarily at an 80% rate, that city revenues cannot account for more than 10% of the operating revenues of the entity, so we are not their primary funding source, but more a supplement to that. At the time of the request, the organization must have funding from other governmental programs of some sort so that it's clear that this is something that government entities would be involved in and others were comfortable with that. Program services must be provided at low cost or on a sliding fee basis. So considering the financial situation of the person that's receiving those services, must be able to document the number of city residents served and percentage of city residents served and explain how clients qualify to receive services from that particular entity. They may not be politically active or affiliated with a politically active organization. They must provide a financial audit within 90 days after the close of their fiscal year. If they fail to do so, they would be ineligible for future funding from the city. And they must enter into a service contract with the city upon approval of the city funding, which is something that we have with those entities such as AGOP and Turning Point that we've had long-term service agreements with. So the contract would spell out all of those terms of the services they're providing and those requirements.
That would be the first approach to your, to wanting to approach the city, they would go through?
Right. The first step would be to, we would give them this list, we would ask them to provide the documentation that shows us this history. We would go through those records, we would ensure that the requirements have been met, and then at that point, we would put them on a future agenda to stand in front of the board and make the formal request. If the documents supporting all of these requirements were not available or they failed to provide them, they would not be placed on an agenda to request formally those funds from the board.
Comments?
I have a question. Like in the event the organization Better Roads Forward, which cropped up to prevent I-70 becoming a toll road, they would have to answer to all these two in order to-
Well, if you recall, we did not fund anything for Better Roads Forward. The city did not fund anything to that organization. You all chose to enter a contract directly with a legal firm-
Oh, okay.
-for some services, but there was not a contract with Better Roads Forward because of the nature of what they were doing with some of their funding, it prohibited the city from actually being involved directly with that group.
Does this policy reference our requirement for an audit after a certain?
Yes, after a year. They have 90 days after closing their fiscal year to provide the audit.
You know, the one bullet point may not be politically active or, I don't think it prohibits a organization from lobbying, so you could-
Right.
For example, let's say somebody from Turning Pointing wanted to go up and lobby a bill that maybe, you know, up to improve or give them better conditions or whatever.
Right.
That would not be prohibitive.
No.
So lobbying is not under the definition of politically active.
Right.
Which I think is the same way with the normal 501(c)(3). You can have lobby expenses or limits on the line of IRS code, but you can still lobby.
Doesn't mean some of your members may not go and lobby for a particular-
Right.
...issue that they're interested in, but the organization cannot be politically active.
So is your thinking that they'd have to hit all the bullet points or they would, or there would be some, I mean, this is a guideline, it's a policy, is it, you know, is that, so in other words, you know, operating expenses should be 80% of, you know, going to programs. You may have some groups for some reason that may be a little off that, so if somebody comes in at 79%, would you then say, no, you don't qualify at all, or how are we going to use the guideline?
I think you have to, I would have to use some common sense with that.
Okay.
But I think there's a difference between 80% and 30%.
Right, absolutely.
So I think it would have to be a window that is very close to 80% or somewhere in that realm to give us a guideline, meaning it can't be 30%.
Right.
It has to be somewhere near that 80% perspective in order to qualify to meet the guideline.
So you would use this basically as a, as a guideline, not necessarily etched in stone?
I would say etched in stone to the point of they would need to meet all these requirements within an acceptable realm of change or variance. So do they need five years operating experience if they only have one? That would not be acceptable. If they have four years and six months, then that's an acceptable range of variance. So I think every point would be important, or else we wouldn't include them here, but there's some variance ability within those points.
So you're going to use this as a guide as to whether you bring it forward to the board for-
Yes, that's the, that's the intent.
I think it's a good point that you brought up with the common sense thing, what Gary brought up about the percentage-wise and the years, because, you know, we may have some nights, a new organization comes in here and they operate three or four years and show that they're, get good faith. So I think you're right, a good common sense approach is what we need.
It's a good policy, I mean.
Anybody else got anything?
You looking for approval of that this evening?
Can we go back to what Mike said about the Better Roads Forward? We don't really view this as the same type of policy that would fall under that. To me, isn't that more of a, I don't know, you could use lobbying or a marketing thing that falls outside of the scope of this, because certainly Better Roads Forward wouldn't have clients that they gave a sliding scale deal. So this is really not geared, I don't think, for that type of thing, just more the business nature. I think it's more geared toward human service organizations that may-
Service contracts.
Right, that may want to come to the city for funding.
Right. The Better Roads Forward would have been a one-time, not really so much of a service contract, but a one-time agreement by the city to fund certain things. Because of certain circumstances, we could not enter into that. But it would not be a service contract seeking funding. It would be a situation where you all had decided that you wanted to become part of that organization rather than the other way around. They didn't come to us seeking funding. We discussed the possibility of being a part of that by our own discussions, not an approach wanting funding for their organization.
And that truly was a lobbying effort and an information, conforming the public effort, it seemed to me like.
Yes.
You know, I think that point there, Gary, may be, may not be politically act, politically active or affiliated with politically active organization. I guess that maybe covers that part of it.
Well, there's a lot of things here that that particular group could not have, no.
It wouldn't apply to that, something like that. I mean, where this is going to play primarily, as I see it, in human service-type organizations who would want to come to the council and get funding for some aspect of services that are doing for the public-
Yes.
-to the benefit of the city. So AGOP, Turning Point are good examples of that.
So are we at a point that we want to vote on this?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the policy.
I'll second. We have a motion by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Shell Harvey. We'll call vote.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes. Carry six to zero.
My next item for you this evening is a request for approval of a change to the city's overtime policy for our police department staff. We many times are interested in applying for grants and inevitably, those grants require that the officers be paid overtime because that's part of the reimbursement of the grant, is that it be overtime paid to do these certain tasks that the grant's paying for. So we struggled for a while with figuring out how to write that so that it's not changing our overall overtime policy for the police department, but yet allows us to meet those requirements of some of these specific grants. So what seemed so difficult ended up being really very simple in that we need to include the language in our policy that says if the officer is working a grant that is an overtime-requiring grant, or if it's a contracted service, which many times ends up being things like working for the school at ball games and those things, which we have trouble getting people to do those things if they're only getting paid regular time. So it's going to help solve that situation, but primarily, we're doing this because there are many grants that can be accessed, but it requires us to pay overtime to the officers to do that, and then it's reimbursed through the grant process. So the language that you see here basically says that if it's an officer working an overtime reimbursement grant or contract situation, then we will pay that time and a half and then be reimbursed by that outside party.
Do we have a lot of these?
We do not, because we didn't have this in place to be able to do it. But it's those things that you've heard chief talk about recently that they've talked about applying for, and when you read the fine print of the grant document, it says that those officers had to be paid overtime to be reimbursed for it.
The only issue we've run into where there's grants with special consideration and maybe on call or extra bonus, something built into the grant that wasn't part of the normal operations of our entity, is sometimes employees don't understand why, why does he get this and I don't get that? Because they may get a different benefit because the grant's going to pay for it and I'm the one who didn't get the benefit, I don't understand the difference. So as long as employees are really clear as to why there's a little differential treatment and understand that, then I don't think it'd be problematic. But that will come up inevitably and somebody will say, well, so-and-so gets to do this or gets paid that and I don't, why not?
Well, they're all going to be given opportunities to volunteer for these special projects.
Right, and that's what I was going to say, that's the other side of it, is, okay, here's an opportunity, everybody gets an chance to go for that opportunity and then the chief or whoever's in charge selects the person based on some criteria.
And do you think, chief, that'll be a problem?
I don't think it'll be a problem. There's plenty of secondary work that they can sign up for.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the policy change for overtime for the police department.
Second. Motion by Alderman Shell Harvey, seconded by Alderman Costello. We'll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Carry six to zero.
That's all I have for you this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. We're going to operational updates. Number 13, Brandy Walters, Director of Operations.
Good evening. The first thing that I have for you is the monthly marketing and business support report for the month of April. And as you can see on there, our big number was real estate contacts. We've had a lot of real estate companies contact us and asking about available properties and getting all the specs on them. So that's been a big thing lately. We had, there was one ribbon cutting that was at the Pregnancy Options Center the month of April, and then we have two businesses that are looking to open. One already has, and that was the Main Street Real Estate Company. They are having their ribbon cutting on Friday at 4:00 this coming up Friday, for any of you folks that want to help.
So when the real estate companies are contacting you, are they primarily contacting you about available property to rent, or are they representing a developer or?
They're really, right now, from what we have found, is they're really just calling, just feeling out, getting what properties are available. And they're finding out like where the water lines are, the sewer lines are, but they don't, they don't have anybody in particular that they're representing at that time. They're just trying to get all the available properties. Dolores has been really good about getting the, letting people know that we have properties on our website. If you go to our website and you link over to this Lois website, and on there, it has a lot of the details for those properties. So she's really been walking these real estate companies through that and showing them where they can look.
Yeah, because when I usually see a real estate contract, I think that somebody's trying to buy and sell a house, but they're really looking for ground that could be used for other purposes.
Yes.
That's great.
The next thing that I have is the monthly admin, admin report for the month of April also. On there, I wanted to note that we had two events in the month of April. One was with the Easter egg hunt, where we had approximately 70 kids out there, which was a little bit lower, probably quite a bit lower than what we had last year, but if you remember, we had to delay it because of the rain, because of the weather, snow actually. So that was delayed, so I think that's why that number was really low this year. We also had the citywide cleanup, and I know a lot of you guys went to that. We ended up with a semi-trailer plus eight pallets of TVs and monitors, 9.27 tons of the large items, and a semi-trailer and a dump truck full of recycled metal from that.
That's a lot of good comments.
Good comment, yeah.
It turned out really well. We had a big turnout that day.
Is that the first year we've taken electronics?
No, we've always taken electronics. This was the first year we took large items, like furniture and mattresses and that kind of thing. Yeah.
It appeared to me that the organization of directing the folks in to get rid of their items really improved and kept things flowing for a real while.
Yeah, it went really smooth. It lasted 253 tires. And I want to let you guys know that the farmers market is starting next Tuesday, the 22nd.
I'm sorry, you said what?
The farmer's market starts next Tuesday, the 22nd.
Remind me, is that every Tuesday or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Every Tuesday, 3:30 to 6:40, I believe, or 3:30 to 6:00.
The six.
3:30 to 6:00, sure. The next thing that I have is the health insurance waiver payments. So this is the annual payment of half of the employees' health insurance if they do not elect insurance through us. So the total for that is $24,344.64.
Motion to approve the health insurance waiver payments. Second. Motion by Alderman Costello to approve the waiver payments, seconded by- Motion by Alderman Costello to approve the waiver payments, seconded by Alderman Schultz. Roll call vote.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Second by Alderman Delloy, my mistake.
The next thing, I wanted to give you guys an update on the pool park and what's happening out there. They started the tile work this week on the actual indoor pool, so that is hopefully going to, we're looking to have that done by the end of next week. And at that point, they'll be able to pour all the edges around the pool. Once that's done, then they'll start pouring the rest of the decks out there. They have put in the fire sprinklers for the front offices out there. If you have a chance to go out there while they're working, it's kind of neat to see, because you can now see where everything's at, where everything's going. As far as the park goes, we have the water and sewer lines. Those will be to the aquatic center, and those will be done by the end of next week. And then, once those are done, they'll move and get the stormwater in, and then after that, they'll take the water lines the rest of the way throughout the park. The, also, we have the electric, which as Brad's crew has that about halfway through the park now already. The lights that are going along the street out there are on order, so hopefully, those will be here, and once they get all the electric in, they'll start installing on those. The disc golf and the walking trails, those they're working on continuously to get all that cleared out, so that'll be coming along. The dog park is in the works. If you haven't seen that, they have three sides of that up. Brad told me tonight that if they keep the deer away from it, it would help if you're trying to run through it. So, but that will be finished up, they'll finish up the dog park part, that'll be finished up once we build the restroom facility right there. So, that's kind of where we're at as far as that update on the park.
So, there's road work running along forty-seven, along the old burning property, then up to where the road comes in, is that all tied to what we're doing?
Gas line.
Gas line.
The Warrior Avenue extension also, that's going out for bid, so that'll start coming in pretty soon. The next thing I have is the disc golf baskets. We sent this out to several different companies. The only one that bid on it was Inova, but their prices seems reasonable within our budget. So, the total for the baskets and the additional sleeves is twelve thousand and fifty-six dollars. This was originally gonna be baskets and signs, but we're gonna do the signs separately because we're gonna have to have signs throughout the whole park and everywhere, so we're just gonna have one company do all of them. So, this is just for the baskets and the extra sleeves.
Need a motion to approve the, need a motion to approve the amount of twelve thousand and fifty-six dollars to Inova, which was the only bid. So moved. Second. Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Costello. Roll call vote.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey is absent. Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Pass five zero with Alderman Shell Harvey, yes.
The next thing I have for you is the BFA engineering proposal, and what this is for is for them to oversee the whole bidding process and the project of the Warrior Avenue extension. So, they're just gonna oversee it all. They'll be here when we do the pre-bid conference, they'll be here when we do the bid opening, and then they'll oversee that project and make different, they'll go on site and actually watch to make sure everything is being done. And then, it's that additional, also on the back, on that last page is the SCI, and that's for them to do the testing throughout the process. So, the total is twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Have we had good experience with them in the past?
Yes. They've been great to work with through the whole park project.
What was that total, Randy?
The total is twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Okay, I entertain the motion to accept BFA engineering proposal for overseeing the construction of Warrior Avenue in the amount of twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. So moved. Second. Alderman Delloy made the motion. Alderman Costello, second. Roll call vote.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Carry six zero.
And that's all that I have for you this evening.
Thank you, Randy.
Before we move on, I don't know if this would come under Randy's report or back to Terry under the city administrative. Do you have an update for us as to where we're at with the engineering for the sidewalks in the downtown district?
I actually emailed him last week, and he said that they are still on target. I believe the target, the date for their contract was right at the first of June, maybe May thirtieth or June first, but they're still on target to have those numbers ready for us. My suggestion to him was that we schedule a work session, because I think it's gonna be so complicated to try to do that at a board meeting, because they're gonna have multiple phases in the way that they've worked it all out. So, he said he would be in touch with me sometime this week to get that scheduled. So, we will be scheduling a work session in the near future to sit with the engineers and go over all of that.
And that'll be your staff and the engineering company, not the?
No, I, I think the board needs to be involved, because we're gonna have to determine which phases we can afford, which ones we want to try to start working on first, and then we're gonna need to get that into our budget that we're currently working on. So, I think that needs to be a board work session, so that the engineers can explain the different phases and how it all comes together. I'm afraid something would get lost in the translation if we sit with the engineers and then try to bring that information to you, because I feel like it's gonna be fairly complicated.
So, I have a question on North Highway forty-seven.
I thought that's what we were talking about. I'm sorry.
I thought you were talking about downtown.
Sidewalks.
Oh. Downtown sidewalks, we really have not made any progress. We are trying to hire a civil engineer for our open planning and zoning position, and my hope is that that civil engineer will be able to start that engineering work for us, because at this point, until things get busier, there's going to be some downtime with now planning and zoning split from the building department. So, my hope is they will be able to start that engineering process for the downtown sidewalks. And we'll know that whenever that position closes, if we're satisfactory in getting a civil engineer in that position. If not, then we will start the process of looking to hire an engineer to go ahead and start that project.
So, we basically took, what I remembered is the city accepted responsibility for the downtown sidewalks. That was?
Yes.
Piece of that, so that's part done. I thought we'd agreed to go out and pull an engineer for that, but?
We haven't done that yet.
So, and you're thinking that that might be able to be tied in with the, with the employment of a?
To do it in-house, we probably would hire a, a landscape architect-type subcontractor, because a civil engineer's gonna be able to give you the how-to for build the sidewalk and make it ADA compliant, but the aesthetic part of it, I think we would need a consultant for. And I think we will have a lot more ability to control kind of how that comes together if we do it internally, but if, if we're not, if we don't have any ability to get the engineer on board right away, then we'll just go ahead and look outside for engineers to do that. We've got the money in the budget to move that forward.
Deal to Alderman Ock, because I think we were on two different ways once.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Well, since we're talking projects, I was gonna say wait for Guy later on, but where are we at on the sidewalk ditch water work on, was it Roosevelt?
I'm working on easements right now. Naturally, we gotta get easements. A lot of, most of them, I think there's three permanent, the rest are construction easements on it.
Okay, so we don't really have easements yet?
No, that's correct.
Okay, 'cause I've had a number of people saying, when are we gonna start this?
I need to get out there and get the easements and talk to them. I've got the, got it marked out. Most of them are temporary easements, out of, out of the majority of them. There's like three of them that are permanent, and there, it's not a big hunk of permanent, it's maybe two or three feet that would be a permanent easement on it.
Do we anticipate this project starting before the end of the budget year, or?
At the end of this budget year, I would say no, because I think I moved it forward to, to carry that part over, so, and we got one more month, so it'll be close to get, maybe, I can't guarantee, depends on what kind of feedback I get on people signing off on the easements.
But let's say that goes well, will this be a project we will start in August, or delay it till after?
I would say, I would say somewhere around the end of August.
Okay. I mean, people are just asking, you know?
Right, and then, like, if they're asking, then it should be easy to get the easements.
Maybe the right people are asking.
And that's always.
If they're asking, it's gonna be a summer of two thousand and eighteen.
Right. So, that's where I'm at with that. Same with on the north, on the south side. I got that worked out. People got a visual. I just need to make contact and get it, get them to sign it and move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Brad Bushcous, Martin N. Shane Brown, Director.
Good evening. Let me see my monthly report there. Mowing is, has started up, and so is the setting the ball fields with the soccer, I think finishes this weekend. The spring soccer and baseball's in full swing. And we've got a tournament on the June the second and third will be coming up for that one. And also, I don't know, our concerts in the park had started last Friday, had a very good turnout for it, probably one of the biggest turnouts we've had, so turned out very well. Another one coming up this, or in June, June and July.
You have one a month, Brad.
One a month, yes.
Okay, thank you, Brad. Guy Jeebers, Department of Works Director.
First item I have is my monthly report. We've had a couple of good-sized water main breaks. We've had quite a few, and the numbers are up on sewer backups. Three of them were on private, and four of them were on city side. We did our yearly wet test, passed that, and moved that up to last month instead of August, which I got a dry summer.
Do we, do we think the water breakages are resolved now, or?
It's a hit and miss. I know that our water usage is up. Also replaced the meter at one of the wells, to see if that was causing problems. But the water main by the outlet, that was, that was a big one. That was setting alarms off on our towers.
So, what was the water line construction though, or what was made of?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
What was the water line, the ones that broke, or the, what's the composition of the water lines?
Through PVC, what happened with the one out by the mall was that the hydrant pulled away from the main and called it a leak. And we had, since it makes a loop around the outlet mall, we struggled on getting it shut off, trying not to shut off the restaurant, so they opened for business, but we were unable to do that.
But the other aspect of the interchange is that the tanker trucks are pulling off of?
Off the hydrant, and we did, and we did them readings, they got meters on the aliphant flow.
So, some of it could be usage, but probably a lot, most of it's leaking, or water line problems, right?
Yes, with the big leaks we have, and we also, I can tell we have a big main leak in the sewer system, because I can check the hours of our lift stations and how long they run, and if the flow's up at the wastewater plant. So, nothing out of the ordinary on the lift stations, you know, if we have one that main, a water main leaking in the sewer, we're gonna have extra runtime in the lift station. When it rains real hard and it's hard to adjust it, but when it's dry, we can really monitor that pretty close.
So, what happens to the towers? You said alarms go off in the towers, is that because the system can't keep the tower full, so it sets an alarm off?
We'll have, we'll have, first, we have a low-level alarm, which, it's really not low, it's just letting us know that something's going on, and then other wells will start feeding, because all the wells are pretty much tied together, and they talk to each other, so like six and seven will bounce back and forth to fill eight. So, if one's going down, means six or seven's running more to keep that filled. So, we might get a tower that's getting low, seven's gotta come on and fill that one, and it's gonna let us know we got something going on. Did you get all that? Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, made sense to me. Don't ask me to fix it, though, I wouldn't know.
Wells talk to each other.
Wells talk to each other.
Are there any other questions on the monthly report?
You can say they get along well. Somebody else say it.
Next item I have is a change order for a decrease. This is our old?
Will you repeat that word?
Decrease.
Don't get inside here.
You know, with a decrease to remove the old bar screen, we're gonna go ahead and do that ourselves for a two thousand dollars for Corey Luke John. I need approval for that.
Entertain a motion to approve the decrease on change order number seven for Corey and the John.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Delloy. Roll call vote.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Carry six zero.
The next item I have is a change order number six for under-stall construction for the increase of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Wait a minute.
That wouldn't trump the other one.
A decrease in two thousand?
I did the decrease first.
That math don't work.
Go the wrong way.
And this was the, we knew, this was the end of the project coming up, and this was one of the last things we had to do.
See if you're best for last.
The worst for last.
Okay, we entertain a motion to accept the under-stall contracting change order number six for an increase of twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars for East Interceptor Sewer and Water Street Force Main Project. So moved. Second. Motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Delloy. Roll call vote.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Can I ask, I don't know which question should go, just, they closed MM now at the train tracks, so how long do they anticipate that being closed? Do we know?
At the top of my head, I do not, I can, I can't recall you.
Per the contract, it has to be open by the end of June.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna say the date. I thought I saw six to eight weeks.
Yeah, end of June is the contract date.
They're going the wrong way.
And this was the, we knew, this was the end of the project coming up, and this was one of the last things we had to do.
Save the best for last.
Save the worst for last.
Okay, we entertain a motion to accept the under-stall contracting change order number six for an increase of $23,850 for East Interceptor Sewer and Water Street Force Main Project. So move?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Costello, seconded by Alderman Delloy, roll call vote.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Shelby?
Yes.
Yes. And that's good.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Can I ask, I don't know who the question should go to. They closed MM now at the train tracks, so how long do they anticipate that they closed? Do we know?
At the top of my head, I do not, I can't recall.
Per the contract, it has to be open by the end of June.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna say the date. I thought I saw a sick date, week.
Yeah, end of June is the contract date.
And they basically have all the asphalt. I drove up to the ground this evening. They've got all the asphalt removed, all the, it looks like they're gonna tie into the Veterans Memorial.
They're moving quickly. It would not surprise me if they were ahead of schedule for reopening.
Also appear they're gonna, shortly before the westbound off and on ramp, they were putting the reinforcement bridge material for the end of this evening, so.
It's only gonna be fun to do a road trip and just walk the site with somebody who knows what's going on. After all, textures are paid for, right? We have a sign to that effect, don't we?
We have what? I'm sorry?
A sign to the effect of the City of Warren.
Oh, yes. Certainly.
Okay, Larry Allen, Chief of Police.
Evening, Board. First item I have for you tonight is a monthly report.
Only have one ride along all year? Participant?
I think we've had more than that. I think that's an error in the bookkeeping on that.
Yeah, I've seen more than that.
Right. Or maybe they were all this month, whether or not on Aprils.
That's been off the charts.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Next item I have for you is a request for the purchase of body worn cameras from CopTrax in the amount of $14,386. You'll see that the bid from ProVision is lower, however the cameras from Stalker, CopTrax, will interface with the new in-car videos we'll be installing, and they're the same manufacturer as our radar, so it'll all be serviced by the same people. And we've been using the same company, Stalker, and have had outstanding service for, for the past two weeks. We've been running one of their cameras as a test. It's been perfect.
Good. So this will outfit all of your?
This will give each officer a camera.
Why did the one bid the base smart docks and the other one didn't bid it? Did they just miss it? I mean, that's really the price difference, is the?
Uh, the, this system uses a smart dock, which has its onboard storage. So when the officer comes in from the road at the end of his shift, he takes his camera and sticks it in that dock, and it stores it in this. The one here that doesn't have the dock, that actually uses a computer, instead of a dock, it has a server.
I noticed the one bid, it looks like they only bid 12 cameras instead of 16, is that?
Correct.
Still iron. I make a motion to approve the bid by CopTrax by Stalker for the amount of $14,386.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Schultz to award the body camera bid to CopTrax by Stalker in the amount of $14,386, which is the best bid, seconded by Alderman Shell Harvey. Roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shelby?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
That's all I have this evening.
Can I ask you a couple of questions about the body cameras?
Sure.
So what is the storage capacity? So what happens at the end of a shift, whatever's recorded on? Is it running all the time, or is it just when the officer gets out?
It's, there's one button that activates it on the front. So when an officer goes up to make contact with somebody, he presses that button and that starts it. When he's done with that contact, he presses the button one more time and it turns it off. So throughout the day, I'll have these bits, or these incidents that are all recorded, and they're all, since he's got his own camera, they're all tagged to his name. So when he comes in at the end of his shift and puts it in that storage dock, now there's a list of only his videos, and he can label them with whatever the incident number is, and then they're stored.
So how long is, do we have a storage policy in terms of the length of time that we store it?
We will.
Then there's gonna be a policy about turning buttons on and off?
Absolutely.
That's part of what we're doing?
I have a question for you, Chief. It's not about what we've discussed, but the vandalism issue that we're trying to address, especially downtown, but not limited to downtown, that seems to be, doesn't take much to get that out in the community that we're having vandalism. Are we aggressively?
So, yes. The most recent acts that have been reported have all, there's been a suspect who's been identified, suspect who's been turned over to the proper court, which would be juvenile in this case. Our officers have aggressively started patrolling, looking for more of these trouble. And I had hand-delivered to the business owners along Main Street letters telling them some tips that they can do to help us, to help them, as well as things that they can do to help prevent it on their end.
Are these events daytime, nighttime?
The last one that we just did was broad daylight. I believe 3:00 PM in the afternoon.
I certainly don't wanna start revitalizing downtown and have that to be an issue.
All the ones that have been reported to us recently have all been solved, and even as a consequence, solved some park vandalism.
Good.
I just wanna say, I received in our business, one of the letters that the chief mentioned that they handed out, and I very much appreciate it. I've heard Alderman's good comments about it.
Our detective bureau and the school resource officers did an outstanding job in solving this within like a day, so.
With the summers coming up and no school, that's concerning, you know. Thanks for being aggressive.
No problem, sir.
One other thing I have, last month, or last man talked about red light enforcement. You know, it was an editorial in the paper, which wasn't related to me, I didn't know that. Not even my ward. Is, have you put any more thought into what we can do to kind of deal with some of those interchanges there? Obviously, you can't set an officer there just to watch the interchange.
Right. So the first thing we did was to make sure that there was actually appropriate police presence there. So using the GPS trackers in the cars, I did some math based on a couple of cars. We're there almost 650 times in a week per car. So that's at the North Otter Road at 47, which means roughly, if you do the math, we're there less than once every 20 minutes. That's not including the state cars and the county cars that go through there. The second thing we did was look to make sure that our officers were enforcing traffic along that whole stretch where they are. However, we're planning coming up in the next week or so, some aggressive directed enforcement at two particular intersections. So when those are gonna be in the works, I'll let you guys know about that in this meeting, so the public also knows that we're gonna be there.
One thing I, you know, as I read the letter to the other, it's kind of risky to, you know, to park a car out there. There's not a lot of room at 47 in the, in the service road and the offering.
We have to be kind of creative with the way we watch that intersection.
It could cause more.
Cause more trouble than we're preventing.
Yeah, you'll get a letter to the other direction then. Yeah, it's one of those can't win propositions.
Well, that letter indicated that we were never there. Well.
Well, yeah, obviously.
We're, we're there quite often.
I'm amazed at the, on Cool in front of the school, the cross street that comes up from the Baptist Church, Walton, Walton, I believe.
That's Walton.
People that are going straight on Cool, that don't even touch the brakes. I mean, they go through the stop signs like they're not even there. It's just amazing. I guess they get into, happen to do that and they just can.
And believe it or not, that's one of the intersections that we have officers watching, write a lot of summonses off of, so.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
No problem.
Okay, we'll move on to Mike Cross, the acting building commissioner, on three report.
Good evening, gentlemen. I believe you have the monthly building and code enforcement report in front of you.
Look at the number of new residential permits.
Why can't I just miss that?
16.
Yes.
How long has it been since we've seen 16?
In a year.
We didn't have that in a year, you know?
That's correct.
Wow, one month. And it's all over the place, right? It's just not concentrated to one area.
No, they're, they're Walnut Hollow, they're Field of Dreams, they're Warrior Ridge. Now we have a new builder in there.
Where is that at?
We've got a, let's see. In Field of Dreams, they had purchased 15 lots from Cannon Builders. Cannon Builders is no longer building here. They're called B&amp;M Homes. They got their first hole in the ground today. I did my first footing inspection for them today. And they're off and running.
Mike, is that the lots that are now numbered? Because I had one of the residents call and ask why those.
Those are in Warrior Ridge.
Yeah, Warrior Ridge.
Right, that's a different builder.
That's a different builder?
Yes. Yes. That builder is Midwest Landscaping and Contracting. He has purchased 19 lots over there. He's interested in purchasing another blank of 20. We have another builder over in Middletown Estates that's already purchased 10, and has permit approval for all 10. And he's already has two holes in the ground, two foundations coming up, and a third one going in today.
Wow, exciting.
You don't drive with a slow speed vehicle between sites, right?
To make a UTV, essentially, for miles.
Right now, I need like two vehicles. With all the, I'm not sure if you guys know that, you know, we have a new dentist coming into town. Took over the old probation office up there. They're currently rehabbing that to come in. Besides the Nuremberg Building, we have Schnucks. We have the library expansion, the pool park, and Dollar General. And then I was just informed the other day, talking with an engineer and the architect, a $3 million renovation that we're gonna be starting here pretty soon at the county building here for jail.
So I've had several people ask me about the Dollar General store. That's supposed to be a brick store, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, because I mean, people drive by and go, actually, the zoning member's saying, I don't remember approving this to look like that. So I said, no, we approved a brick building. So I guess they put the facade on, and they attached a brick structure somehow.
Right. The wainscoting and the brick structure, the, the offset in the foundation is already in place far with all the brickwork. And that's moving along quite nicely. There are already drywall on the inside.
Oh.
Yes.
I was amazed how they came in and did all of the concrete work, and then they're gone. I mean, everything from the sidewalks and then the parking lot looked crazy. I couldn't help myself. I had to drive down there and see how they were draining the water away. I know what they're doing, obviously, but it was, it's pretty obvious that they're building store after store after store. They've got a process in a sequence of events that they, they do.
325 yards of 8-inch high strength, high yield, which that drives very quickly in one day.
Yeah.
It's just amazing. Schnucks should be pouring, almost all the infrastructure inside the building is complete. They're laying fabric now and sitting wire, and probably by the end of next week, we're gonna be pouring concrete there. Both detention basins are in place there at Schnucks and looking really nice. They're maintaining those really good right now.
Well, they're doing, there's a couple, there's a deep hole right next to the service road on both sides.
It's a board.
Waterboard.
Yeah, they're on boards, right. Yes. Yep. So that's moving along very good. Keeping me very busy, which I enjoy, and I enjoy the challenge. So it's, it's, it's nice to see the city. And we're getting a lot of attention, so. And it's positive.
Thank you for your reference.
Oh, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. The gentleman, I think his last name is Jaeger, that's doing out by the pool park.
Forest Ridge.
It's my understanding that those houses are sold before he gets them built.
He has, the only two that aren't sold now are two spec homes. Every house he's putting in the ground is sold now. He's bringing in three more sets of plans sometime this week. They're mastered already, so we're gonna move forward with those. He projected another, by the end of the year, at least another 10 homes being built in there.
Wow, that's great.
He's got 57 lots in there to, to use. So, builds a very nice house.
It looks like it, yes.
Yes. And a great location.
Super location.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Number 18, bills to ordinance. Call for first reading of bill number 21-18.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Shell Harvey, seconded by Alderman Costello for first reading.
An ordinance to annex an unincorporated area located west of Highway MM known as Country Lake Golf Course into the city of Warrenton, Missouri without further action.
Roll call vote now.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shelby?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to mention that Alderman Miller lost his mother last Saturday. She was 95 years old, I believe. And spent some number of years in a nursing home, but I'd like to express the sympathy of myself personally and the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at the point of adjournment. Need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Alderman Shelby, seconded by Alderman Shelby. All in favor? Aye.